Yeah, I was wondering.
Mr. Lamar?
How are you doing?
Mr. Nance, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I didn't expect you to be here today. I figured you'd be out on the golf course somewhere.
Well, I told Senator Langford I was going to play another time.
We'll catch him another time.
Man, it was Terry, it was...I got the red carpet treatment.
Where were you?
Southern Hills.
You're one of the high rollers now.
Oh, my.
Muckety mucks.
You walk in, I was like, "I don't belong here." I didn't want to be away from you.
It's crazy.
My cousin was playing and he left his shoes outside because it was dirty. And he's walking back down. He's at...soon as he said that, the young woman pops up to him. There you go. And they cleaned them.
John.
Hey, guys, you're back. Way back. But I mean, yes, we're asking.
You don't lay down a hole in them.
Yeah, that'll straighten up. Straighten up.
She didn't tell you about her tan?
Yes.
Listen. She works, she works a good day a lot.
She does.
You think she's good?
Yeah. You see that last one?
I don't get one. You gonna take it? I know where they go.
Try to make sure you get up there.
Yeah.
Did you spray me?
I actually don't.
I'll wait.
Go ahead. Get rid of this one.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
She still gets real tired.
Oh, yeah.
Started cutting.
Thank you.
Two o'clock. And did four.
Much better run.
I was trying to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder what it costs to be a...
It's a hundred thousand to get an emphasis. Somebody thought it was only a thousand a month, but I think it's more than that.
Okay, well, what are these numbers?
A hundred grand. Think about it.
You're all excited.
Five hundred thousand a month.
Four, four, five.
Right. This is my favorite part of all.
Budget unexpended.
Walked past my kitchen. Do you need my phone?
Okay, this is going to put us over budget.
What are you looking at?
Better D.
Nothing, no.
Four, four dash four, four, five dash five, four, one, five.
Did you have one?
Fifteen, no, no, no. We don't have the money in there to do that.
God, the guy that got us.
Or do we?
But I had to actually work that day.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, really?
Which means we got to...
Thank you.
On letter D, under four.
Thanks, chief.
That's on page thirty-five.
He played golf there. How are you?
All right, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I do want to make a quick announcement regarding the microphone, so we're all on the same page. We're having some delays in the microphone, so we have to kind of start the microphone ahead of process. So be aware that they pick up every conversation when they're on, so until we get that fixed, just be mindful of what you don't want others to hear. But we've got to give it about a four-minute lead, so we're ready to go. I've asked Mr. Nance to lead us in prayer and pledge.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord, we thank you for this day that you've made. God, our prayer is to be with us tonight, give us wisdom and direction and guidance on the business of the city. We pray that you'd help us with that in Jesus's name. Amen. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Terry Lamar.
Here.
Choya Shropshire.
Here.
Dennis Nance.
Here.
Travis Maluer.
Here.
Randy Chitwood. Charles Trammell.
Here.
Chris Gantier.
Here.
Bruce Smith.
Here.
Also, I'd have to ask that if you are speaking, please come up to the microphone. They're having...it also has issues picking up distant voices, so petitions from the audience, we have none. Department head reports. Building inspector, not here this evening. Emergency management, Mr. Jensen.
I was just going to let you guys know, we've gotten several phone calls, quite a few phone calls actually, over a safe room, individual safe room project that Rogers County's doing, and the public's not understanding why one community is eligible and another one's not. You know, we've done probably three of these projects, two for Pryor and one for the county over the past ten years, and every five years, we come up with a new plan that when Pryor's plans do, the mayor, me, police chief, fire chief, all of us will sit down, come up with priorities and what we want to focus on in the next five years. And if the last time that we did that flooding was a big issue, and that was the focus for this past five years, that's why we did the flood study that we did, some of the other things that we've done with FEMA grants. So if we decide that that's something we want to have as a priority the next five years, then we can do that, we become eligible to apply for that, for the public at that time. So, and in the meantime, if people are interested and afford to buy one, they know they're running about four thousand dollars for an in-ground right now, thirty-eight-hundred to four thousand. Tinker Federal Credit Union is doing a low-interest loan for them. You can get a loan for four thousand for eighty-eight dollars a month for four years at two percent interest. Anybody have any questions about that?
Thank you. Fire chief, BK, how you doing, sir?
Well, I was doing good. This morning, I was pouring my cup of coffee, and they said, "Hey, boss," which usually doesn't mean good stuff. At Station Two, we got a water leak somewhere, either between the meter to the building or underneath the slab, so our morning started off pretty rough. We called some people to start kind of getting a handle on that and figuring it, but if it's in the truck bay, that concrete was made for heavy trucks, so I don't know, so heads up on that. But we had a bunch of little kiddos come and see us from the school, so you can't be mad when you've got little kids running around the station and hanging out and seeing all the trucks, so that turned our morning around pretty quick. We're pretty fortunate right now. We're at that point where the schools are kind of getting ready to kick away for summer, so we're seeing a bunch of the kiddos come through. We did a tabletop with Johnny and all those guys, and we did it at the hospital with the industrial park and stuff like that, and we learned some good things to where, oh, we have some strengths, but we've got a lot of weaknesses too with some of the stuff we deal with, the industrial park and how we're going to handle if there was anything major, but it's good to sit down and start having those talks. That's what we've been swinging away with, figuring it all out. Y'all have anything for me?
I'd like to say thank you for your two officers, Moore, or your firemen, Moore and Lennon down there. We brought a couple of little guys, and they had the best time in the world Saturday. They had a good time.
And those kiddos, like I said this morning, when they come up, I just see future firemen, so it's pretty good. And now that we're with the PD, it's real nice, because then you can take them over there and they come running back. I'm like, they don't even go halfway through and they're back on our side. So, no, it's great. I see nothing but future firemen, and I love seeing the kiddos come up there and enjoy the place, and it helps us. Sometimes we see those guys when they're having a rough day, so if they know our face, it's good things.
I happened to be passing by today, and the kids looked like they were having a ball.
Yeah, no, it's good. And like I said, which ones, mine or the school's? I never know.
Is there a difference?
No, no, there is not, for sure.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important to remember as we go forward, we want to keep our kids and our families first and foremost in what we do, and so supporting them like that is always encouraged. Mr. Bowman, golf.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to take just a minute here and congratulate everybody on mayor and city treasurer and the police chief and the city clerk and all the new councilmen. So I'd like to congratulate all y'all. Golf course has been very busy. It's a really busy time. April, May's a busy time for us, so we've just got a lot of maintenance stuff going, a lot of people playing golf, so it's just a really busy time. Just a little update in case you didn't see it, our Pryor High School girls, we had one of them qualify for state, and so she's down in Durant or somewhere playing state tournament, starts tomorrow, and our high school boys qualified for state, so that's a really good deal, so they'll go down next week. We just finished up the Saratoma Masters Tournament, so all that went good, and that's what this little sheet is. This is unofficial numbers, but it's what, when I talk to the representatives, it's how much money that they raised at our events out there at the golf course. So we're at about forty thousand dollars for those four events, and so we plan, I'd really like to, by the end of the year, have it over a hundred thousand dollars raised. The next one we have is the Cinco de Mayo, the Main Street Tournament out there Friday. It's eight-thirty start, so I'd like to welcome everybody to the golf course. If you haven't never been out there, if you need my number, I'm sure they probably have my number, so give me a call, text me, come out, visit the golf course, love to have you out there. Other than that being busy, that's about all I have, other than, you know, I'd like to also just let you know if there's anything that I can do to help the city, you know, besides the golf course, I want to do whatever I can do to help the city. I know that's what everybody's trying to do, is help the city. I try to help the ballparks, the softball fields, the baseball fields, the soccer fields, even fire department, police department. So anything y'all think of that might be able to do to help you guys, help push our city forward, I'd love to help you. Anybody have any questions?
All right, thank you. Thank you. Library, Ms. Carey.
We had a fantastic author visit last week. Bestselling author Jenny Meyer-Sane came to the library. She's written, she has two published young adult novels right now, the third will come out in January, and then she's working on a fourth. Anyway, super major, big-time bestselling author, came to Pryor America, had a fantastic time. If you look at her social media, she says that the author visit in Pryor was one of the best that she's ever done, which is high praise. She has traveled all over the country, has taught for twenty-five years, so she knows what good people and good audiences are, so I feel really proud of my staff who put that together, and it was really fun to have her. This coming Thursday, we're going to have a STEM program for children and their grownups. Grownups are encouraged to come because it's a little bit of a complicated project, and we only have so many adults, so we need all the hands to help that we can get. It is a registration program, so you'll need to call and register. I think they're building solar cars, which will be really fun, but we only have twenty-five of those kits, so we've got to do registrations for that. Next week, for grownups, we're doing a pet portrait class, and it's more of a pop art kind of thing where you have a, you'll email us your picture of your pet, and we'll size it correctly for the frame that we have, and then you paint on the glass of the frame and then also on cardboard or cardstock on the back. It looks really, really cool. Check out our Facebook page, because we've got both of those events up there. And then, my favorite thing, we were contacted by Oklahoma State University a couple of weeks ago and asked if we would like to be one of their rural libraries that they give hotspots to. So a hotspot is an internet device. It runs on cellular technology, so if you get a cell phone signal with T-Mobile, this hotspot will work wherever you are. So they are going to give us six or seven devices for hotspots for us to lend out to our patrons. We haven't figured out all of the details of that yet. We think probably they'll go out for a week at a time, and then the only requirement from anybody is that the patrons who check them out, when they return them, they fill out a survey for the grant that Oklahoma State has. These devices are free to us, we'll get to keep them forever. They do encourage us to continue with the program after our year is up, so it's something that we'll need a budget for, but the cost is not too bad. I think it averages about a hundred and eighty to two hundred dollars per year per device for the data, and it's unlimited data, so that's pretty cool. But we'll have more information as all their ducks get in a row and they get us our devices. So, do you guys have questions for me?
The cell phone data. You said the first year is no charge?
Correct.
So it'd be something that could be looked at into the budget in the following years?
Right, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Parks, cemetery, Mr. Powell.
Excuse me, biting the crud. Can't really talk. It's going pretty good to park, not really much to talk, it's the usual springtime. Plan on opening the splash pad next Friday, the twelfth, as long as there's no issues. Other than that, I'm handing it out to the guys, the cemetery, because they've jumped on it, and it's already looking pretty good for Memorial Day. There's never any guarantee with the summer kids anymore, so they've been on it, looking good. Other than that, I just don't have much.
Frank, what are the hours going to be on the splash pad?
Same as it's been every year. Seven days a week, ten to eight to begin with until school changes.
Starting on the twelfth.
They change when school starts.
Any other questions? Thank you. Hope you're feeling better there, Frank. All right, police, animal shelter, Chief Ken Trell.
So I'm changing it up a little bit, the format, kind of how we used to do it. This way it'll break it down more specific as far as what calls were going on, where we're seeing increases, things like that, so you'll see a long list of stuff. We're trying to work through Spillman, the computer system, to get it where it's easier to do, but I had someone help me with it, and I'm doing it at a two-week period, so each council meeting, you'll have the two-week period. So the last two weeks, they stopped two-hundred-seventy-six cars, fifty-eight citations, about twenty arrests, and then you can see all the other calls for service that were coming in on top of that. Some of the notables that we had over the last two weeks, Officer Armantrell put a mock wreck on at the high school, which was right before prom. He also did a victim impact panel there at the high school, which just basically deters drunk driving. Then Officer Jenkins did a Oklahoma City bombing tribute, organized it at the junior high, it was a pretty neat deal. And then the detectives, there was an undercover operation they did, somebody was calling jail, tried to do a jailbreak. They worked with Mesa County, kind of went undercover operation and stopped it before it happened. Then a grand larceny from Mountain Seating Air, the officers were there, and within two hours, had three suspects in custody. And then a shots fired call that we had here in town, nobody was hit, they arrested one suspect, and then an officer got eleven pounds of marijuana. That car had two juveniles, I believe, from Oklahoma City, and a suspect that was wanted for rape, which if you saw the news lately, I mean, it kind of brings in to light some things that can happen off that. So that's kind of some notables that were going on within the department. I've looked at the old police department, I'm kind of going to it, and that's something we're going to have to discuss maybe next council meeting or something, but there's a lot of cleaning, and so a lot of stuff we have to get in that bay to get it ready, and maybe that's something we can kind of be thinking about, brainstorming, and I'll kind of come up with some ideas. It's going to take a lot of man-hours if we pull police officers off the street to clean it, so I really hate to utilize that resource, so just something we can think about. I talked to Mo, who's kind of overseeing the punch list at the new police department, and he kind of, I asked him to give me something to kind of talk about. The roof was a big thing, pieces of that roof, as far as I know, has no leaks right now, but it hasn't rained a lot. He did say the roof has a fifty-year warranty, so, and he said that you guys have it in your packets. I didn't know that information, but he did say it's a fifty-year warranty on the roof, so if we have issues down the road, that would be covered. A lot of the fire issues that they were having in the jail, the ceilings, they'll have completed this week, they had to paint the ceilings, the dampers in the cells, they'll complete this week. Kind of hard to read them, this is small print. The jail doors, he said that they're three weeks out probably before they get new jail doors in and get them installed, so that would be coming up pretty quick, and the exit signs and little punch list things that he sent me that they're completing. And I don't know if you've ever talked to him or not, he's pretty easy to deal with and talk to. Other than that, you guys have any questions for me?
Yes, Jeremy, on the doors of the jail, the existing doors that are on there now that were the wrong ones, are they going to give us a credit for those, or are we having to buy the new ones outright?
I'm not sure, I didn't get any details with him on that, so I wasn't sure if he'd talked to you guys yet. I know it's been kind of chaotic a couple of days, and that was in passing, kind of getting my feet wet with him and meeting him, so I can address that, see what he has to say, though. You know, he's there a lot, and like I said, he's pretty easy to talk to and deal with. Anybody else?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
These are also just some, I know our walls are on the agenda tonight, so just, and the front page is always something we're kind of proud of.
Thank you.
Can I go live in that little room?
So on the front page, what happened yesterday, we took five cats up to this, don't stress me out, cat cafe in Oklahoma City. So in the pictures, you can see like this is a whole blast-in area where people can just go sit with these cats and adopt them, so that's going to be just another, hopefully another out for our cats. And it's pretty cool. And then the other page, of course, is our numbers, if anybody has any questions on that, the first one.
And the rest of this packet will come up later.
And the others, of course, that needed or...
Okay, and then we'll address those here in a little bit, the rest of the...
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, rec center.
Good evening, everyone. We've got a few things going on at the rec. One of the main focal points that I'm taking care of right now, trying to get a grip on, is our HVAC units, and I think that's been a topic of conversation prior to my coming, but I am trying to drill down on that and get a breakdown of each unit and what kind of its life expectancy and maintenance that's going on, needs to go on, and so forth. So I'm spending a fair amount of time trying to do that, because those are big ticket items, as you know. The other thing, we're trying to hire three positions, assistant director, front desk, and a custodian, and so we've got some good candidates for those, so in the next couple of weeks, we should be able to wrap that up, I'm thinking, so we're happy about that. Financially, last month, we did about thirty-five-hundred dollars better than we did a year ago, April, and in March, we were up about eight thousand dollars for that month, just shy of eight thousand on our revenue, so we're, you know, we're clipping along. Our, we had a hundred and five new members last month, and our retention is just over eighty-one percent, so we're hanging in there, I think eighty's our goal on that as well. Lot of things going on in aquatics. On the fourteenth of April, we had a hundred and fifty-eight kids, a hundred and fifty-eight third and fourth graders from Choate came and swam. We're doing, getting ready for lifeguard training. On the eighteenth, we had forty-two K first graders from Cleora, school came in and swam. GRDA did a training today, and they did one last week on the twenty-sixth, so we've been hosting that. Through April, we had seventeen public pool parties and six private. Next week, our staff will begin in CPR training. We're signing up for swim lessons going on right now. On the twenty-first, we had Inola Schools in, and they did cardboard boat races on a Friday, a few weeks, just over a week ago. And then last Thursday, we had thirty-eight kids in from the Y-Cliff School to swim and shoot hoops and so forth, so lots of kid activity we're seeing, and so we're happy to have that. Because the miscellaneous stuff, we're trying to, we're just about to... Kind of some miscellaneous stuff, we're trying to, we're just about to get this Cherokee Nation membership thing off a high center and get that done. I had some conversation today, so we're closing in on putting that into play. We're working on some youth programming. Talked to some other people around the community that are in, in that area. And so we're gonna have a brainstorming session and see what we can come up with there and, and provide some, some programming. Couple of small things, we're gonna have a morning coffee area in the rec center. We're getting rec center radio, we'll have our own kind of radio station, I may have mentioned that before. We had a booth on April twentieth at the downtown Main Street evening on that Thursday night. And I'm gonna, I was selected to help the Northeast Tech select their teacher of the year and their support person of the year. That's on Thursday. And then we did some, just a little bit of an adjustment on, about an hour adjustment, expanding some pickleball time on Thursday evening, so. Anyway, that's a pretty good rundown of what's going on. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you. Street, Mr. Glenn.
First thing we're getting to reading, if anybody in y'all's ward, I've had several, many more calls again about asking about striping and stuff. If they called, you know, please tell them that we don't do, we won't start crosswalks, stop bars, anything like that, around the schools or anything through there until school is out. I mean, that's just, that's just the way it is, and plus, we gotta get, we gotta get the weather. They're talking about a lot of other, like the downtown, when we gonna do downtown? When the weather's good, we get, we get all this other stuff, and then, then we'll do downtown. But it's just, people just gonna, they're just gonna have to start being patient. Other than that, we've been out dipping ditches, we've had some problem areas that, not problem areas, but we've had some of the, in these areas where it need to be dipped. We was over today on Southeast Second, which we've had some problems over there with one of the residents. The water was coming in to her garage, which is, this is probably not gonna solve everything, but, you know, we, we talked with her and explained to her that it's basically how her house sits. That's, that's where everything goes, because she has a natural drainage that goes right beside her house. But we went, dipped a ditch, put a pipe in for, on her driveway, and hopefully this will catch a lot of the, the street water that comes off. We dipped it. It's about, oh, eighty to a hundred feet for hers, and then we went across the street, down a little way. She said that that, that ditch was being, it was overrunning when it rains, which these are, these ditches down through here takes all the water off from the east down through there. Where the church area comes, all that water from that field all comes down through there, so. But, well, like I said, hopefully this will help, help her out a little bit, and we took sandbags, put down in front of her garage. She does say she doesn't use it anymore, so we tried to explain to her, you know, things would help her, that she needed to do that would help her out. But we filled sandbags, put it in front of her garage for her, and hopefully if we get another rain, this will kind of deter some of the water, so she's not flooding out, I guess. We was out cutting shoulders out on Old Highway Twenty from Gaither to Keel's Road. I know this last rain that we had, it was on major rains, we haven't had a chance to actually get out there, but where there was water that was standing on the road. So we went cut, cut shoulders on that today, or this Monday and today, and they got that done, so we'll, we'll see if we get another rain. Hopefully, we won't have to go off any further on the side. We cut it about, I think it was three feet off, so hopefully that'll, that'll help drain all that water. On Keel's Road, we finally finished up that little drainage project we had there. On the west side of the road is, I guess, considered a city's easement side. So we went through there, and there were some of the pipes that, that was in there that were the original drive, so we was able to replace those. There were some, and there were some that was plugged up that we had to, we had to dig out, shake out, and put back in. But we got all the ditches dipped out there and all the pipes in and everything, so hopefully it'll be, it'll be ready for the next gully worser that we get. Over on South Hogan, there by Southeast First Street, I've had some complaints about people driving and parking up these citizens' yard. Especially picking up kids in the afternoon, they line up all the way down on Hogan Street. Now, I guess they'll go across Southeast First on down, and I guess they've been thinking that that's a city right-of-way down and through there. With still these, the, the citizens' yard, so we're gonna put a couple signs up. One thing they're talking about is when they do that, cause sometimes even though they have things going on at the, I guess it's called middle school now, not junior high. So, but they'll park on both sides of that street, well, when you do that, there's nobody, any, nobody, I mean, vehicles can't get down through there. So it's kind of a safety issue, so we're gonna be installing a couple, no parking between the signs, signs up there. And hopefully that'll take care of that, that parking on that one side of it. So, there won't be any more problems with that, I hope. I may have reported before, I can't remember, we finished, it was like a thirty-foot by four-foot sidewalk we finished, finished over on Larkspur. There was a lady called and said that there was, that it was crumbling, which it was, it needed to be replaced. So it was about thirty foot, so we went ahead and got that done. We've got a ditch over on South Whittaker, we already had a locate call and done everything, but went and talked with the residence that was there. And there were, because they wanted to dip because there was water standing out there in the ditch. Well, it's, it's dry as if we haven't had anything should be standing, so come to find out, there was a water leak. So I talked with him, I told him that we wouldn't, we wouldn't dip that or do any type of work to it until the utility got their, their done. So I talked to Jimmy, and he said he's gonna try to get over and get it, get that leak fixed, and we get that, that ditch done for them to make them happy. And we've been mowing, weed eating and spraying. I mean, we got, starting, starting tomorrow, Thursday, I can't remember, that we're gonna start on the alley stuff, for is our spraying and trimming. And then once we get that done, then we'll be going back over to that little project we was doing over on Lewis Street. Gentleman called me today, was wanting to know if we was gonna finish that, and I told him, I said, yeah, it's just, we have to, certain times of the year, certain times that we do things. And worse like our spraying, now we try to get it done before the grass gets too tall, so we don't, we're not mowing and spraying at the same time. So that's, that's just extra fuel that we don't have to expend on mowing parts, so. And, other than that, and then we're running a sweeper, I mean, every chance we get, we're gonna probably run the sweeper for the next couple of days. Over on South Park, we've, we've done over on the north side here while back, so now we're gonna start over off of Thurman Street and start hitting there like a tenth, moving all the way down to, to Seventeenth Street. And get tho, get in, get in those areas. And other than that, that's, I mean, pottling when we can, and about it. Anybody got any other calls or questions, or?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, item four, mayor's report. Item A, Mays Tra, Mays County Trails Alliance update regarding the safe streets and roads for all SS4A grant. See anybody here from there, so I was able to attend one meeting this week with them, and it sounds like they've got some, some, some great plans. They're working on their website, they're working on community education programs. They're very excited about some, some bikes that are coming to the city that we'll, we'll discuss later. But they're, they're really working to up their presence on the educating the public in terms of biking and, and safe roads for all. So I think they've got some things lined up that they're going to try to implement through the summer in terms of kid programs. And then probably this fall, programs where we, we encourage people to bike to work, or kids to ride to work in there. So, as we go forward, we'll get more information on that. But, any questions on that? Item B, discussion and possible action regarding the land use agreement with Prior Youth Football Association.
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor? Nope, what do we do, call for, help me out here, call for the vote.
Well, we're gonna have discussion.
Yeah, let's discuss, that, that sounds like a great deal. I'm gonna get this, I'm sorry.
I've heard some discussion about the length of the lease agreement being annual versus being longer. That's something that I've been hearing, some murmurings, is there some way we can get a little bit of a discussion and update on that and what?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, here's, we're talking about, this land use agreement is for the south side of the drive in the Edward Sports Complex, south of the soccer fields. And so what we're, they're looking at is the football organization is looking for this, the ability to have use of that land. Part of the agreement in there states, states about utilities. Item, item six says, land services needed, the city shall furnish water, sanitary sewer, electric to the field lights, no charge to organization. Organization is responsible for all garbage. Jared, can you fill us in on?
Yes, yes, mayor. Yes, the contract mentions sewer, water, gas and electric, even though guys, you don't, you don't want gas. We do not have sewer out there that far, so what Mays County Soccer Complex does right now is I think they have an aerobic or septic system. Mr. Powell, cities engineer, did a study, we could extend gravity sewer out there, but you're looking at probably another seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, and I don't really think you would undertake that for such a small building. I mean, yes, they need the facility for bathrooms and whatnot, but, you know, we can get by with an approved DQ system, which could be an aerobic system. Be a lot cheaper, but I just want to make sure that in that agreement you see it says sewer, city's responsible for the sewer. I think that might need to be updated just a little bit. I sent it to the mayor, I sent it to the city attorney, we might want to dig down a little deeper on that sewer. And put like an approved DQ system or something that I had redlined to the mayor, so we're not stuck with actually extending sewer. Because I know if we extend sewer, I know soccer fields will tie into it like that, but it's a lot of money for the amount that it's gonna be used, so. It's kind of what I want to talk, water's not a problem, electric's not a problem, gas is not a problem, but they're not gonna want gas, because they don't need gas, because they don't. But I just would like to note that that sewer would be the problem.
So that would be something, is that something we have to alter?
You got that email I sent you?
Uh, yes.
Language and?
We've stricken that part out, so.
So, I mean, you could probably approve it based on the sewer recommendation.
Yeah, and I've visited with the, the gentleman from the football organization, and they are, they're, for right now, they, they weren't able to make it tonight. But they're interested, let's get the lease signed so that they can start doing what they need to do. They would like to look at, and, and down the road, within this time, we can look at, at extending that. But for right now, we want to get them that lease so that they can do what they need to do on that field. They would like to have a longer, there, there's been no defined timeframe to what they'd like, but they have some monies that they've earned and, and saved up. And they'd like to do things like grade the field so it's a little smoother, add some, some improvements to it. And so we just need to look at, you know, respectfully, I, I get it, hard-earned money, and you don't want to invest that in something if you only get a year, so. For tonight, the, the goal is to go ahead and pass through the, the one-year lease agreement on that, and then we would revisit that with them later.
Do we have to amend the motion with that change that was sent in to you, or just run it through like it is? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the agreement that'll be presented to them will have the correct verbiage.
Okay.
And they're aware of that, so.
Mayor, I have another question about item number six on the utilities.
Yeah.
The city shall furnish the water, sewer, and electric. Is the city gonna pay, the city out of the park department budget gonna pay for these utilities, or is the, is that the intent?
I don't, I don't know where, what budget it comes out of, what department it comes out of, but yes, the baseball field, the softball complex, the soccer fields, and this will be paid for by the city.
Mr. Anderson, would you approve?
So, yeah.
So, yes, the way it is now for soccer, that is a cost that's covered by the city.
Right.
And since I'm up here, I will say, representing the soccer board, we are a hundred percent in favor of football being out there, taking care of that side of the complex. And having a partnership with them that brings up that whole area for youth sports.
Well, it's very safe to say on any given weekend hour, it's packed.
Yeah, there will be two hundred cars out there this, this weekend, games, and that's, half of that will be from out of town, and football will be the same. So half of them are coming out of town, from out of town, spending money in prior.
And so, the idea is that as we go forward, and we look at the revenues that will come as they, as they come to town. Clearly, it's beneficial to, to help them make their, their organization as good as it can be.
Just, just a question, are they going to forego using the high school football field for Saturday Little League football games?
I cannot answer that, I don't know, I know there, there has been talk.
That's, that's a pretty nice complex, yeah.
Yeah, we can't, I can't answer that either, I can't answer that for the school, the school board question.
If we need to bring them in next, next year, we can ask them those questions, that'd be appropriate.
Because it's a nice facility, and there's concession stands and restrooms and?
And I think, don't get me wrong, is if they got soccer going on, their facilities are open for the football parents to come over and use their facilities as well.
Yes, yeah, we have an agreement with football, during their practices when they're out there now, to come over to soccer, use our facilities. We open the concession stand when we can, and we have staffing for it. Through a partnership between soccer, MUB, and the Cherokee Nation, we're putting lights up on our practice fields. And we're working with football so that when it's hot during the summer, they'll be able to come over to our complex, use those light fields. So that they're not out there when it's a hundred degrees in August.
Sure.
And we are putting some lights that will shine towards the football side as close as we can to provide them some light to have practices when, when we're using the field.
And we can thank Cherokee Nation for that, I'm just surprised, providing the manpower. But Cherokee Nation was a big partner in that, and it's been twenty-five, thirty years that everybody's been wanting lights out there to sporting complex, so. It's not for games, it's more for practicing when daylight saving times change, you're kind of running out of time between school getting out and daylight, so it's just gonna help everybody out.
It's exciting.
It is, too bad my kids are too old now. Yeah.
Get them out there coaching.
Adam?
Yes.
Could you send me your schedule so I can make sure things are presentable, because they talked over at that?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, mayor, we kind of are digressing all around, my question got diverted on to other things. My question is that the city shall furnish water, city and electricity, and electric. Who is, how are we going to pay for that? Is that gonna be billed to the city, is it gonna be done on a contract? Is MUB gonna do the work and then bill the city for it? Is it gonna come out of the park department budget, or what budget is it gonna come out of?
So I'll have to look and see.
And then paying for those utilities?
Where we've been, where we've been paying it out of the other, I'll get that answer for you, I don't know that yet.
And does the, if it does come out of parks, does the park board, has this gone through the park board too?
Yes, yes, they presented to the park board.
Is Frank here?
When I talked to them on the phone the other day, they had, they'd already been to the park board, so. Frank, when we pay the utility bills for the sports complex, is that paid for out of the parks?
Parks utilities are huge. And it's, everything's, I mean, it's all in the one light aisle, if you have, you got park, tennis, Bobby Buck, and then at the ball fields, each one has their own.
Meter.
It's all, yeah, it's like, don't tell me there's, they'll give me a meter number and say something, and I'm like, really, I have to go search?
So do you all pay for the soccer field too? And did you know about this proposed Little League football field out there too, that's, we're gonna approve a contract for tonight? That hadn't gone through you in the park board yet? Okay, well, you're getting ready to get hit with that one for, the city shall furnish water, sanitary sewer, and electric to the field lights at no charge to the organization, so.
Utilities are all these kind of funky, because we can't, it's hard for us to control the utilities. Like, if I get a call, sometimes if the water runs excessively high, or sometimes the winter, usually it's the winter time, like electric. Like, somebody left, they left the ice machine or air conditioner on, and I gotta go chase it down. The, like, lights and everything else, that's kind of hard to control. Yeah, it all comes out of the?
And the, the soccer organizations had this virtually the same agreement, where the city pays for those utilities on your, your side, correct?
Yes, sir.
So this isn't, this isn't a new encumbrance, but it might be additional encumbrance, so.
I was just wanting to make sure you and the park board knew that this is coming.
I'm hoping, in a way.
For your budget.
The last couple of years, I've gotten everything in the park all switched to LED now. I'm hoping that would.
Rug it down?
At least they got one side of the tennis. Between the rain, between the tennis tournament, goodness, it's hard to get out there.
Yeah, so I was hoping that would put a dent, you know, into the, into the bills, but you can't pinpoint really. But most time, I don't see the bills, they come in up here, and just if something was excessively high, then they notify me to go and kind of chase it down. But usually it's in the winter.
So Councilman Lamar, for your original question, that's who's paying for what as far as on the construction side of the sports lighting? And, um, MUB is donating the, um, manpower and equipment due to the fact that it's on city property. Um, Cherokee Nation is buying all the material. Um, that we use for that, um, Cherokee Nation is also paying for a separate contractor to come in and install the lighting and pay for that lighting, because I'm just gonna take the power to the pole, that contractor's gonna come in and take it up the pole do the sports lighting for them, so. The city's not out any money for that until we switch that meter on.
We won't be out any money until we have a problem with the lights.
Yeah, just start using the lights.
Yeah, well, we also are, we, we're supposed, it says here defective lamps for the, uh, subject fields we replaced at the beginning of the season and as needed by the city, so we'll be responsible for repairing and replacing.
We knew that for Frankie at the park, too, you know, if it's an issue, well, you'll bother the park, well, my boys will change it out. Kind of the agreement that we got for the new council members is, um, and the mayor, we're all, you know, under one umbrella, but it costs me money to do stuff, but we donate our time and, and material, time and manpower to, uh, to help out, as long as you guys help pay for some of that material.
Sure.
I was just wanting to make sure that Frank and the park board knew that they're gonna be having this added, extra added expense in the new budget. And obviously, they didn't know about it yet, so.
My biggest issue would be is are we going to mow it?
Well.
I'm concerned of mowing.
Frank, that's the next question. In section number eleven of the contract, it says that fields and plain surfaces shall be maintained to a high-level maintenance to ensure safety and appearance, and it will be subject to inspection by the city. So in the contract, it's not, it does not specify whether or not the city or the organization is going to do that actual mowing maintenance.
If I remember correctly, and I'll confirm with them, I'll call them and make sure they have somebody that mows that for them.
I've, I've run into them several times. They had a group last year, they, they came out, and it wasn't city employees, it was a.
Contractor.
It was a contractor, and they, because they mow right up to where I'm at.
Well, it, it, it says here that, that these areas are, will be subject to inspection by the city, not mowed by the city, so if we go out there and they're not mowed, then we need to get in touch with them to have them do, uh, to do that.
I'll say this, last year, they kept it very well.
It's very, I don't, I don't know if you've been out there, but if you see how well-used that facility is. Dennis, I know you're right there, um, there's really not time for the grass to grow. They, they'll work it down, and they have, they have done a really good job of maintaining that, as has the, uh, soccer group.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All right. Um, we're gonna take a vote?
Yes, Paul.
Yep.
Okay, Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Maluer?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item C. Recognize and present proclamation for Kids to Parks Day on May twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Go ahead. Kids to Parks Day National Park Trust Proclamation proclaiming May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as Kids to Parks Day in the city of Prior Creek. Whereas, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three is the thirteenth Kids to Park Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And whereas, Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Park Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibility while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Zach Doyle, do proclaim May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as Kids to Park Day. Signed by the mayor of Prior Creek, Oklahoma, on this date, four twenty-eight.
Is this something we have to take action on? The date, you gotta fix the date?
No, it'll be okay, because that was when it.
I was just waiting for you to pronounce hypercholesterolemia.
Did I get it close?
I don't know.
Pretty close, yeah. Did I get it right? Anybody want to try it?
I don't know.
Okay. Item D, under Mayor's report, discussion and possible action regarding payment application number three to Envision Civil Contractors LLC for twenty twenty-two Whittaker Park Tennis Facility Parking Improvement Project prior twenty-one oh seven in the amount of fifteen thousand nine ninety, six and sixty-four cents from Parks Capital Outlay Account forty-four, four four five, five four one five. Discussion.
Motion?
You have a motion?
Second.
Motion, uh, Choya, second. Gauthier?
Mr. Mayor, um, by way of discussion, looking at that line item in our, uh, expense report, or whatever it's called, um, we don't have enough money in that line item for that. The four four, four four five, five four one five.
Yep.
And listen.
I do apologize to everybody, we are on day two. We're in administration, so we're trying to get everything lined out and figured out as we go forward.
And there's another item further down, pulling from that same account as well.
Yep.
And it's.
Mr. Mayor, since this is involving the park department and their budget, maybe the park superintendent needs to be in here to discuss this and know about what's going on.
Okay, we're gonna put you on the spot a little bit here, help us get this all figured out. We have the, uh, the payment application number three, um, to, uh, Envision Civil Contractors for this, uh, fifteen nine ninety, sixty-four. Uh, it's coming out of account five four one five, and in that account, we have nine thousand five ninety.
Yeah, this was the additional, that change, you know, that was, you know, the original budget numbers. And then this was that change, you know, that they done, and it just, it went over, yeah.
Do you have another account that you propose taking money out of for that?
I actually, I do on the pickleball part later, but, um, no, I mean, I don't, well, I mean, it's capital, I mean, I got all that pool money that was budgeted, you know.
The only money he could use is the money in the four four account, he can't take from any other accounts.
Because that's general.
Like I said, that's, that one, on the original budget, that's, that was that change that went over, yeah.
Yeah.
Could, would it be feasible to table this and give you enough time to figure out what to do with this?
Um, that would actually be the appropriate thing.
Does there still be another five thousand retainage fee on that, too?
Right, and as we're looking at the, uh, these numbers are from the month ending April thirtieth, so they're pretty fresh, but.
Yeah, they just, you know, finished here recently.
I, I would like to have the opportunity to look at that.
I'll change my motion to table.
And I'll, I'll do the second likewise.
Okay, do we want to, uh, put a time limit on that table, or do we want to just?
Well, I mean, hopefully we ought to be able to know something by next council meeting, I would think, huh? You okay with that, Troy, the next council?
Yes, that'd be fine, if it's okay with the mayor. That's fine, well, we will look at that, we'll put it on that and figure this out. Mr. Powell?
And to tie in with that, Frank, I know that later on down the road here, under the consent agenda, you've got the pickleball in there, which is only eighteen hundred eighty-two dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna pull that, actually have a different, a small cap.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need to change that line out?
It'll be like two one nine.
Okay.
All right, well, let's, let's, uh, come back to this one. Mr. Powell?
I just want to indicate, uh, the, this is the closing out of this project for the, for the envisioned contractors. And normally, we only process one pay request each month, but in this particular case, uh, this is the last pay request, and then the retainage was scheduled to be handled in the second, uh, city council meeting in this month. So if you table it in this action, I would, I would like to be able to, for you to process both of those pay requests at the next council meeting.
Do we know the number of that retainage?
Uh, I didn't, I didn't bring the pay request with me. It, it's, it's on the, it's on there, I could, if I had the phone, I could.
It's another, uh, five thousand six fifty-six.
It's, it's the retainage, it's on. Right, five thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents. That pay request for that retainer has already been submitted and signed off by us. It was just being held by Cheryl until the next meeting. So I'd like to, I'd like to be able to process both of those at the same time if we're gonna table it from this.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to table. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Maluer?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
All right, item tabled. Item E, discussion, discussion and possible action, uh, granting a work to order, a work order to our city engineer for acquisition of an easement and developing drainage improvement plans for the tributary Salt Branch Main Stem to North Elliott Street that crosses Dr. Nunley's property. You have the, uh, large prints in front of you, do you have those?
Also on the overhead.
I know you guys, I know you guys.
We can't see it from here.
I know, I know. Uh, there's the combination, we got those, you guys, sure, take a look at that.
Probably have a motion there.
Let's call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, work on granting the work order to the city engineer for the acquisition easement, developing this plan for the, uh, as it stated on the agenda, to cross Dr. Nunley's property.
Second. Okay, motion, Lamar, second. Smith?
I was gonna get it, Bruce. Jones, whatever, I answered it.
All right, discussion?
A little bit of, this is, this is the next part of our never-ending Salt Branch Improvement Project. Uh, we've done phase one previously, which was on the main stem east of Highway sixty-nine. Uh, project that's already on the books and scheduled for bidding at the end of this month will be, uh, uh, part two, which is the west side of Highway sixty-nine in an effort to clean out that creek and make it more efficient. Uh, this tributary that, uh, we refer to as the South Tributary to, to Salt Branch, which on here is referred to as does cross Dr. Nunley's property, uh, is, this is a twofold project. It was not as high a priority when we originally came up with the master plan for Salt Branch, but we moved it up on the priority list at this point because of some deterioration that has gone on with this tributary at the, uh, near the mouth of the, of this, of this trib going into the main stem. The, uh, a couple of years ago, three years ago, we went in and, and upsized a sanitary sewer line that serves the, the north area, the child sewer area, animal shelter area. Uh, that sewer line crosses this creek, and the size of that casing that goes across there, it's an aerial crossing, has caused a, a, more disturbance in the creek than what we, uh, thought it would. We had riprap around the, the, uh, armament around the, the creek crossing, but it, uh, has continued to cause some deterioration, and now it's beginning to uh, cause erosion on the downstream berm that, that, uh, Dr. Nunley or his predecessor put in uh, to try to keep the water off their property, uh, off their lower area of the grass area that he keeps mowed and maintained. Uh, that berm has been severely eroded, uh, with the rains that we've had this year. And, uh, so we moved that up on the priority list. So this would be the appropriate time to go ahead and continue that cleanout all the way to Elliott Street, which is, is part, is a high priority item because that serves the Bonnie Acres and Belmont Estates areas. And, uh, those, as you know, those, those properties were put in before the ordinance pertaining requiring onsite detention, and so those, uh, properties were fully developed, and they have a lot of runoff, and they increased the runoff into that trib, so, uh, we need to try to solve that as a city because it wasn't solved at the time, uh, that wasn't on the books at that time, so. The, uh, easement that, that Dr. Nunley would be giving for the portion going from his driveway out to Elliott Street, uh, would, would constitute, uh, channelizing that meandering creek that's choked heavily with trees and underbrush, getting rid of the trees and underbrush in there, and making improvements to not only the Elliott Street crossing, but also the, uh, other box culvert that goes under that driveway and, and continues on.
Bruce, that's the area you and I went down there and walked into and looked at, and that's what this is on this depiction here.
I think that'll cure a big problem. It's a minor thing to do that thing.
We're, we're doing the right thing, we're starting at the bulk lot, we're starting at the bottom end and working up, which is what we want to do, that way we can get a way for the water to get out. Uh, but we'll continue that step operation back up, up that tributary. We've got some other work in the future that needs to be done on that. We're coordinating that work with some of the residential development that's being planned and looked at on the upper parts of that reach.
And the other area that he's talking about with the erosion in that creek bank is directly behind Chris Cornet's house and just south of that low-water crossing that you and I looked at as it goes on north back through there.
Yeah, I think that'll solve a big problem down there. Wait, looked when it had to.
That's, yeah, that sits on solid rock, and so we, one of the reasons that we, that particular solution is gonna require us to, to come up, it's gonna go down. Uh, we, we can't get down into that rock, so we're gonna have to armor those walls to replace the earth berm that Dr. Nunley or whoever had, who had that house before, uh, put in there, so we're, it's a little more extensive than what uh, we originally thought. We would just have the city street crews go in there and put some additional riprap and, and protect that berm, but, uh, the erosion has just continued to, to, uh, get worse, and now that it, it just compounds itself. So we, we need to take steps now, we're gonna, we're gonna lose the sewer line, we're gonna lose some of that, that, uh, work we've already been at that.
Big rocks?
Big rocks. Rocks, rubble, concrete chunks, not like molten mold.
You know, like if you go to Salona and you look off of the bridge, you're, the big rocks down there.
Steve, this area you're talking about up there with the sewer line, that's kind of straight north, it's just, it's just north of the curve on Elliott to, to, uh, to Clayton, north of Catholic Valley.
Well, you're talking about is where we actually, we crossed the main stem with the new sewer line.
Yes.
That one's holding up quite well. I, I walked it not too long ago, but
Okay.
It hasn't, it hasn't, it was heavily armored when we put it in. This is the other, this is the crossing that's directly behind, uh, Mr. Cornet's house.
Okay, and north of there, northeast of there, where the proposed new housing additions are gonna go in a couple miles to the north or so, is, is drainage projected from there to increase into this area?
No, uh, it, it, I, I want to answer that question directly, but there's no projected increase in drainage. There is drainage from that area, and it will continue to drain.
I guess, should say, will that add to that drain?
Yeah, well, it will, we're, we're now in the position to require those developments to put in onsite detention, so we're, we're holding firm on that requirement.
Okay.
Uh, so any development that goes in there that increases runoff will be held in detention ponds before it's, it's released.
Okay, thank you.
So it's important to understand why this came, came up is, uh, recently is because clearly it's not something we can address when there's no rain.
Right.
And so I want to thank those city officials, council members, um, et cetera, that took time out of their day, their night, their personal time to go and drive the streets as. as the flooding was taking place this last, what, last month. And so they were really able to kinda get an eye on where the water was flowing and where it was backing up. It was identified that this spot at, on the Nunley's property where that water comes in is definitely a choke point for the, for the water runoff. And so it's got to be addressed. It's, it's to the point where it's causing problems for everything around there. So it's, I appreciate those that went and looked at that and have taken their time to, to put their input in. And so as we go forward, we'll, we'll need to. Yes. Do we have any further comments or questions on that? Call for the vote.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item F. Discussion and possible action regarding a decrease in the residential natural gas rates inside corporate city limits of Prior Creek from eleven dollars two forty-six per MCF to ten dollars seven twenty-four per MCF effective May twenty twenty-three billing.
So move.
Motion, Gantier, second. Lamar?
Everybody wants to make a motion, wanted to decrease.
Thought that decrease was a typo for second.
So for everybody that's new, any increase or decrease in our residential water, gas, or electric has to go through my board and then go through the council. You got one. So last time at my board meetings, they approved the recommendation to decrease and sending it upstairs to you guys. So this is where we're at right now. Our contract ended last August. And natural gas has been a pickle substance right now because you never know what it's gonna do. Because back in twenty twenty, when we changed presidents, it started on a pretty rapid incline. Then we had the winter storm Yuri back in February twenty-one, which destroyed our supply. So we kept on increasing. Then we had war on Ukraine, Russia, and so we kinda stopped getting gas from them. So we kept going up. And then we had one of the ports in Louisiana that exports it to overseas went down. That kinda helped, to be honest with you, because that got our supplies back up. They were talking back in mid-August of last year that we could see gas prices this winter anywhere from ten to thirteen bucks a unit. So we, our contractor's up, so we kinda went in going, okay, we need to extend the contract, get in a new contract. So if you look at the top, we went for some of our load. We got a trigger price of eight thirty. And then I was watching the, the natural gas prices decline a little bit. And I kept talking to my expert, what's up, you know, what's going on? They said, well, it's still, we still feel like it's gonna be which high, which I'm thinking, okay, whatever. So we locked in a little more, in a little more. So then we settled in at seven fifty-seven is what we had approved last, I believe it was last October council meeting. So we ran out of some of that stuff. And I was like, okay, back in February, it kept decreasing. I was like, let me lock in some more of our load. Normally, I'll lock in eight percent of our load, so I don't have to deal with it. But with how the gas prices are, I'm glad I didn't because we'd be paying a lot more. So, so now, when I locked it in back in February, we got it at three six six oh, which is nice, which is back kinda where it was before all this stuff kinda went sideways on us. And so we're at right now at a fifty-two point two cent MCF decrease. And you might ask, well, how are we gonna do our outside city customers? So the way our natural gas rates are based on, it's either inside or outside. It doesn't matter residential, industrial, commercial. It's just inside, outside. So inside, we got a fifty-two point two cent decrease per unit. Outside, we'll get the same decrease if this goes through tonight. I'm not sure why we wouldn't approve a decrease, but you know, it's your call. Do what you want, but this is where we're at. Just a few other numbers. Some people may ask, how much we mark this stuff up? Just so you know, it costs us per unit. So like right now, if you approve this decrease, it costs seven point oh four eight cents for us to buy from our wholesale provider, which is Blue Mark Energy. Then we pay a point two oh five per unit to get it through the pipeline through ONG. So you're paying a transportation fee, you're paying a wholesale fee. So that ends up, that would end up being like seven point oh four eight plus point two oh five. I don't have it in my head right now. Sorry. But we mark it up three point six seven six to be able to maintain our benefits, our salaries, our material, whatever we got planned for the year, equipment, insurance benefits, everything. So, and part of the city charter states that we had to mark, make a little bit of profit so we can give it to the city, which we give the city seven hundred seventy-five thousand a year, break it up over twelve months. So that's kinda where, how that goes. We break it up into all four utilities. But that's kinda where we're at. So we don't mark it up that much, but we do have to mark it up so we can break even and make a little bit of money so we can give some to you guys. So I'll entertain any questions you may have. I'm kinda hoping come October, when this contract ends, that I'll be coming back to you for another decrease with, it kinda flat lines like it is right now. But the problem is, is they were expecting cold, cold winter. Guess what? We didn't get a cold winter. It was kind of a mild winter. The port was down in Louisiana, so they weren't exporting. So our supplies stayed high. So that's kinda what drove the gas prices down. Well, guess what? The port's fixed now, so you know, they are exporting now. So we'll see how long it stays low. But, because when you're exporting gas, your supplies are going down. You forecast for the winter. If you're not producing as much as you're letting go, guess what? Your supplies are gonna go down, then your price is gonna go up. So if you're crystal balls as clear as mine, then let me know. Because right now, mine's pretty muddy.
Yeah.
And with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Questions?
Good.
Go ahead and call for the vote.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Item G, discussion and possible action regarding accepting the resignation from Travis Malur, seat number seven of the Prior Creek Planning and Zoning Commission, retroactive to April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Did you have that motion? You had the motion, okay. Motion, Nance, second. Smith.
Anybody?
There were like four there, so.
So who had the second?
Right.
Who had the second?
Uh, Smith.
Smith?
Okay.
All right. Discussion. Travis, thank you for your service.
Sure.
Thank you. Glad to have you on the council.
Oh, thanks.
All right. Call for a vote.
All right, Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Epstein?
All right. Item five, city attorney's report. Item A, second and final reading, discussion, possible action regarding an ordinance emitting the Title X, Chapter Six Table of Use Regulations Regarding Outdoor Secular and Non-Secular Assembly and Entertainment Uses of Property Classified Under Commercial Uses. Do we have a motion? Do we don't need a motion?
Motion.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, second reading, no, we don't. Okay.
Yeah, you need a motion.
Yeah, you need a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Can we waive the reading?
Motion to re, waive the reading?
Second.
Second. Nance? Okay. Questions? Comments? Call for the vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Steve.
Oh, Trammell, I'm sorry. I knew I was gonna do.
All right.
She thought little Jimmy was sitting down there and didn't see.
Oh, that's low. All right. Item B, discussion and possible action regarding accepting the seller's counteroffer for the purchase of Burke Property at Six North Bailey, Prior Oklahoma, seven four three six one, for the sum of seventeen thousand. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Gantier?
Second.
Second, Lamar? Discussion. Are, is everybody aware of where this property is at? And why that is of interest to the city?
I would like to ask why.
Okay, so when we started with this process, I would say probably back in twenty seventeen, there was a house on that property that was abated. The grass and, and overgrowth was actually taller than the chimney. And so we abated that house. We removed it. We purchased that property. As Shipman's Funeral Home did their, their infrastructure work to their, their lot and their drainage, it created a great drainage system for them. But as soon as it hit the middle of the street, it was a nightmare. Because their water was moving as it should. This was a rough unkempt property. And so we purchased that property with the intent to do some water diversion or water retention, so to say. Fast forward a couple of years later, after the house is gone, we dug a little ditch over there to try to do our best. But it's really gonna require the property, this property at Six North Bailey, as it's, it's a larger selection, a larger section of land to do some water diversion to help get that out of the properties that are on the east side of Bailey. So the property's on the east side of Bailey, directly south of Shipman's. As a result of this property not draining properly, is causing water to back up into other properties. And so we need to continue with getting that water moved through. The original offer, I believe, was, of the property assessed for forty-two thousand, I believe. Something like that. And we came back with twelve. They said no, so we're gonna come back at seventeen. This has been, this property is in some, some, what's the word?
Foreclosure.
Foreclosure.
Short sell.
A short sell. So, and I believe that they've shown that they're okay to move forward with our, with our counteroffer, so.
Yeah, they've made this offer of seventeen, so we're accepting it. It's a few days out of time, but I think they'll go ahead and take it.
But this is again, a, a purchase of land that will help. You know, I think we're all on the same page that drainage is one of the top priorities that we need to look at. And so this will actually, the plan is, is that, if it's aired correctly, this will get the water moving and it will continue it on down into where it needs to go. So.
Man, I might add that this does have an old dilapidated house on it, Travis.
Okay.
And, and some vacant lots, and those will have to be removed. And this Bailey Street project, there's some other things that's gonna go along with it as far as channeling the water. I think there's, it's gonna include a road improvement. Is that correct, Steve? And, but this is, we have to have these properties to be able to finish this project. And it's been in the works for quite a while.
And it'll help us a lot with the snakes and the mosquitoes and the animals and everything. It's just terrible looking, so it'll be a benefit to us all the way around.
I still got meters up there locked off, so I'm gonna go ahead and make work orders to kill those taffs, kill those meters out, plug up the sewer line, because when we start tearing down that dilapidated structure, I don't want any more water into my sewer than I have to take. So just FYI.
Further discussion? Questions? Call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Item passes. Thank you. Consent agenda, discussion and possible action. Item A, approved minutes from the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. B, approved payroll purchase orders through May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. C, approved claims for purchase orders through May twenty, or May second, twenty twenty-three. D, acknowledge received a deficient purchase orders. E, discussion and possible action regarding accepting a bid, as in the best interest of the city, from Carlton Utilities LLC in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred to be paid from Capital Outlay Account, four four, four four five, five four four eight, for metal siding replacement and repairs at the City Prior Creek Animal Shelter. Other bids requested and none received. F, discussion and possible action, authorizing city engineer to prepare final bid packets for prior twenty twenty-three street rehabilitation project in the current fiscal year, items one through thirteen and fifteen through seventeen, as identified on the attachment. G, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of thirty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven and forty-five cents for the purchase of five-year maintenance and a backup phone for the new Motorola CallWorks nine-one-one system that was received through the Oklahoma nine-one-one Management Authority Grant from COVID reimbursement account, zero five, five oh one, five four oh one. This was originally approved March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Then the COVID reimbursement account was moved from O two, two oh one, five four oh one, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, to the newly created O five fund. H, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure for the purchase of pickleball supplies from Tennis Court Supply, as in the best interest of the city, in the amount of eighteen hundred and eighty-two dollars and three cents from Parks Capital L account, forty-four, four four five, five four one five. Item I, discussion and possible action regarding declaring surplus the following items from Prior Creek Police Department and listing on the Purple Wave Auction Site for sale. Oh, two thousand nine Dodge Charger VIN, two BKA four three T three nine H five eight six five six two. Two thousand ten Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number two F A B P seven B V one A X one two three four nine six. Two thousand fourteen Ford Explorer, VIN number one F M five K eight A R three E G B two seven three three two. Ingersoll Rand Air Compressor, serial number zero three zero four zero four zero two four four. Inventory number zero three two seven seven.
There's no money in there.
Cargo craft trailer, serial number four D six E B two eight two two seven C O one four O O two. Item J, acknowledge receipt of donations in the amount of ten thousand six oh four into donations account ninety-six zero 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 five four four six from Hawkins Family Limited in the amount of three thousand five fifty-two. Fred Taylor Enterprises Incorporated International Division in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifty-two and J J F F Incorporated in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. Discussion and possible action regarding purchase of three Commando Power Bikes from Recon Power Bikes in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-five, uh, six hundred, sorry, ten thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Other quotes received Voltaire Cycles Verona for a bike-on-it War Hog, MD seven fifty, twenty thousand eight twelve and seventeen cents. A Samsung, a Samsung Electric Bicycles for thirteen thousand four ninety-nine and ninety-seven cents. Ten thousand six hundred and four dollars to be paid out of police electric bike donation account, nine six nine six five 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 four six and fifty-two dollars, police supplies account, O two two one five five oh three two. Discussion and possible action regarding, and this is L, I apologize, in an expenditure in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to Intertribal Software Consultants Incorporated for annual laser fee subscription from General Software Account, O two two oh one five two six zero.
I would request letter G, letter H, letter J, and letter K be removed, please, sir.
Also A.
A. A, yes, we need A as well.
Say those again, please.
I have A, G, H, J, and K to be removed.
Should I request E?
I'll ask that you remove E as well.
More time. A, E, G, H, J, and K have been removed. Do we have any further? Okay. And we will call for the vote to approve B, C, D, F, I, and L. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Gantier, second. Nance? Call for the votes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item B, approved payroll purchase orders through May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
A.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I crossed off the ones that I should have not crossed off, but, okay, A, approved minutes of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting.
So move.
Second, Choya? Call for the vote.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion, thank you, Courtney. Okay, call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Stain.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Stain.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Lamar.
Hey, Courtney and I are gonna get this, we we vowed today to help each other out, so. Doing a great job. All right. Item E, discussion and possible action regarding accepting a bid as in the best interest of the city from Carlton Utilities LLC in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred to be paid from capital outlay account forty-four, four-four-five, five-four-four-eight for metal siding replacement and repairs at the City of Prior Creek Animal Shelter, other bids requested and none received.
Make that motion?
A motion from Gauthier. A second from Mr. Choya.
So after talking to Becky in the back, I had, I had time to visit with this last couple of days, and we were looking at some pictures. She thinks it's a Band-Aid and not a temporary fix or a permanent fix, so we want to visit it and kind of see maybe putting like a curb in there versus more metal siding. She thinks the same thing's gonna happen over time, but we put metal back in there and then we're gonna have the same issue in nine years, so.
I would refer everybody to the pictures that Becky gave you earlier behind the luxurious cat spa pictures.
So, you would like, you would like this table?
Yes, I just look and see other options.
How how long would you like to table it for? Need a month or two?
Yeah, if you give me a month, that would give me time to.
Would it?
Did I make that motion?
Or we could pull it off.
I was just gonna say probably better for no action.
Did I make that motion?
You did.
Yes, uh, maybe, maybe no action would be better?
I'll, I'll change my motion to no action.
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion from Gauthier for no action and a second from Choya for no action. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
No action. Item G, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of thirty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven and forty-five cents for the purchase of a five-year maintenance and backup phone for the new Motorola Call Works nine-one-one system that was received through Oklahoma nine-one-one Management Authority Grant from COVID reimbursement account oh-five, five-oh-one, five-four-oh-one. This was originally approved March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Then the COVID reimbursement amount, account was moved from O-two, two-oh-one, five-four-oh-one on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to the newly created O-five fund.
Mayor, there's not enough money in that account.
Yeah. Mo- motion.
We have a motion from Choya. A second from Gauthier.
Yeah, I was gonna bring the same point up.
Yeah, there's only twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-six, or twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents in that account.
Should we, should we table this as well? To give you a chance to look at it?
Yes, I would, I would like that, if we could do that, please.
I'll change it to table likewise.
Change the motion from Choya, second from Gauthier to table item G.
Is this until next council meeting?
Sure.
Okay, yes. Or we can give it more time if you'd like.
We can bring it back up next time.
Okay.
See where we're at. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Item tabled. Item H, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure for the purchase of pickleball supplies from tennis court supply, as in the best interest of the city in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and three cents from Parks Capital Outlay Account forty-four, four-four-five, five-four-one-five. Do I have a?
Second.
Motion, Smith, second, Nance, discussion?
We only have some problems with the funders.
He wanted to, he wanted to recommend a different fund, if I remember. I was gonna use this, this is my small capital outlay. I guess, I guess two-one-nine, fifty-four, fifteen. That's what I was gonna pay for that.
What number did you say it was, Frank?
I think it's two-one-nine, fifty-four, fifteen. I think it's just like the capital outlay, two-one-nine. Small capital outlay. In the regular.
After they figure that out?
Five-four-one-three, I think. I'm looking, see if this is the one, yes, sir. Is that the one you're referring to?
What's the number?
It is O-two. It is O-two, two-one-nine.
Okay.
Five-four-one-three.
What page are you on?
Eleven.
Okay.
That account currently has, uh, four thousand six hundred and eighteen and thirty-four cents.
Is, are they, it's for the, to put pickleball. Is it taking the place of a tennis court, or is it on top, you can interchange it?
Court one, court five's already painted off for having pickleball court. So I've got a guy that's gonna come in core drill, and so you you install the sleeves.
Yeah.
And so, um, basically, nine months out of the, okay, so from March to May, the tennis nets up, and tennis is over, we'll take the tennis nets down, install the pickleball, and then you'll have, you'll still have six tennis courts to play on.
Yeah.
Then we'll have two pickleball courts for the rest, until tennis rolls back around.
Yeah, that's perfect, I just didn't want them to lose their tennis courts at the school when they're having tournaments and stuff.
No, during tennis season, we'll leave still, and that's why the sleeves were the only ones I found that had the brass caps to keep them, you know, that way.
Perfect.
Okay.
For deal.
Mayor, what's the basis for this? Is there no other supplier?
No, well, I said, and rich, well, and so originally, honestly, too, I didn't think I was going to come to council with it, because it's only eighteen hundred. But that one, that's why I posted pictures in there, the other cheaper sleeves. This was the only ones I seen that had the axle cap, the brass cap. And I believe your, your point for that is to keep from damaging the court. Yeah, and to keep it watertight and stuff, the others were just a plastic, so I had to keep it.
That answered.
Do we have to amend the motion for the new account?
Yes.
Probably yes. Let's, uh.
It's zero-two, two-one-nine, five-four-one-three.
Yes, so we need to make a, we need to amend the motion to, uh, pay the amount of eighteen hundred and eighty-two oh-three from Parks Small Capital Outlay, O-two, two-one-nine, five-four-one-three, do I have a motion for that amendment?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Shropshire, second, Mr. Nance.
Yeah, who made the original?
The original motion was Smith and Nance.
So you amend your motion?
You can just amend that, then, that'd be fine.
Fill them in, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I amended it.
Mend the bend, we have that amendment. We have a lot of new people, this is fun.
This is good, isn't it?
This is a lot of fun. All right, so further discussion? Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Pickleball it is.
All right, most passionate, okay, item J, acknowledged receipt of donations in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and four dollars into donations account number nine-six zero-zero-zero-four-five-four-six from Hawkins Family Limited in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Fred Taylor Enterprises Incorporated International Division in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars, and JJFF Incorporated in the amount of thirty-five hundred.
So move.
A motion, Gauthier, second, Smith.
And before the chief speaks, if we look at this account, nine-six-zero-zero-zero-four-five-four-six, and I know, and I, uh, the next one, and K, are those supposed to both be the same? And you can address that, I just didn't want to forget that. Because if we're pulling out of an account, the money that went into the account, is it the same account?
So, the income account where we take money in, we use the zero-zero-zero, and it's a four thousand number, but when we spend money out of it, it's the opposite, so the the numbers are correct.
Um, look at the last four digits.
Yeah, the, when you are spending money out, it changes to the five thousands.
Thank you.
That's correct.
That helps me a lot.
Does everybody understand what what she's saying?
Still learning that part of themselves.
Welcome to school, Mr. Kendra. Okay. Discussion, further discussion?
No, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Chief, do you have anything you'd like to add about this, how it'll benefit our community?
You know, just when I was going around during the campaign, some, or some business owners had talked about bikes and did some bike patrol things. I was thinking bicycles that you just pedal, um, but when I went to the business owner, he's like, no, what about e-bikes? So we started looking at electric bikes, and so I sent him some different quotes and stuff, and that's, it turned from one bike to two bike to three bike pretty quick. Um, but I think it'd benefit as far as, you know, parades, big events, we're getting involved with the kids. It puts more of that one-on-one with the kid, you know, rather than being in a car, you're out with them. Um, you know, doing some things at the schools with the kids, teach them some training stuff, BMX track, everybody wanted us to come out there. Um, and then special assignment areas, you know, if you're getting hit hard in an area by, you know, burglaries and larcenies and people at night, you can send those in there, and I know I talked to a guy from Sepulpa, and he said they had a great success riding around upon people. So, and these are the e-bikes, and they run about twenty-five miles an hour, we're working on policy, getting a policy and procedure in place with them. Um, you know, and and the training setup, we're reaching out to places, of course, training local one, so. And we had six apply for it, you know, we sent it out to the guys at the department, six sent back, but they ran it, and you know, obviously, we only got three, so, but it was a pretty good turnout.
Did you get it, Couch? Did you get the bike? So I just would love to put in there a little input. When I was, before I moved to Pryor, I owned a bicycle shop, and we did the bicycles for the St. Louis Metropolitan Bicycle Organization. The interaction, when you take an officer out of a vehicle and make him a person on a bike where he can be, you know, for all purposes touched and and personalized, uh, the impact on our children is great. The children, you know, the young children want to imitate, they want to get on their bikes. The Trail Alliance has expressed extreme enthusiasm about what this will bring to our community in terms of, we'll say, leadership, being out, promoting quality health, healthy life, as well as the accessibility that a bike gives you out of a, as opposed to a vehicle. Certain situations, it's a quieter approach, it's a faster approach, it's a more mobile approach, so, uh, it's always a good thing. So we'd like to thank those that donated.
Yes, very much so.
That's a huge, huge donation. Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Item K, discussion and possible action regarding purchase of three Commando Power Bikes from Recon Power Bikes in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Other quotes received Voltaire Cycles Verona for a Bike On It War Hog, MD seven-fifty, twenty thousand eight-twelve and seventeen cents. Samsung Electric Bicycles, thirteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Ten thousand six hundred and four dollars to be paid out of police electric bikes donation account nine-six, nine-six-five, five-five-four-six, and fifty-two dollars uh, police supplies account, O-two, two-one-five, five-oh-three-two. I'll make the motion. A motion from Smith, a second from Gauthier, discussion. This is to allow him to purchase those bikes. Chief, can you include what comes with the bikes?
Yes, the bikes fully equipped, it'll have lights, siren, bags on it, um, fully equipped to go for for police, it'll be all rigged out, so.
Does it include helmets?
No, we'll have to get, so we will have to purchase a helmet and a polo and a pair of shorts for the officer. But they think lead time, two to three weeks from when we give them to go, so I was, part two, three, three weeks, and we'll have everything set up, get them to training and go on the street.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. No further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Um, we will now go to addendum item number one. Discussion and possible action regarding the promotion of Justin Couch from Police Sergeant, Range L, Step Four, annual wage fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-eight to Assistant Police Chief, Range Eight, Step Four, annual wage seventy-eight thousand eight sixty-eight, effective May first, twenty twenty-three. This vacancy was created by the retirement of James Williard, do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
That was really quick.
We're gonna go, Choya has the motion, and Gauthier has the second discussion.
This, this all fits within our budget that's already.
It's ready to go.
Backfilling, um, Mr. Williard's spot. No further discussion, we will call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Assistant Chief? All right, item two, discussion and possible action authorizing the police department to seek a COPS grant awarded by the U.S. Department of Justice to hire a police officer. The grant provides a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over a three-year duration for a police officer position. The grant writer estimates her fee not to exceed twenty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars based on an estimated time to write the grant, and she has a contract in place with the city.
Motion.
Have a motion, Gauthier?
Second.
A second, Mr. Nance, discussion.
Uh, the grant writer, what, uh, what line item did we pull that out of? That's something I was wondering about.
That would come out of her, out of the grant.
Well, no, it'll come out of our, our budget, um, when you build this, I can't remember where, where we pull it from yet, but it's not been billed. It, she builds it, um, as she goes along, so it may be monthly, so she may charge, you know, five hundred here, five hundred.
We just need to know a, a place that it's.
And we'll have a line item to come out of.
Yeah.
The purpose for bringing this before you guys was before we proceed forward with spending that twenty-one hundred dollars, I want to make sure you guys are okay, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant, and what that does, it provides a police officer for a duration of three years. Well, if you do the math, we're gonna have to match part of that, I think it's twenty-five percent match is what it says on the grant, which is, if I put my math to it, it was about thirty thousand dollars at the end of that, that the city would have to come up with. Um, but it would cover, you know, the majority of a police officer for, you know, two years, something like that, and they would have to absorb the rest of that. So that was kind of my goal, and I've got some ideas with what I'd want to do with that position. How we get, maybe promote somebody up to detective and backfield patrol, or, you know, there's just different ideas that we can do with, with that money. Um, and it, it gives us a couple of years of an officer salary.
Sure, I mean, it's a good, it's a good deal, I just kind of wondered where, we, we kind of have to, when you write these up, we kind of have to know where is that gonna, what line item is that gonna fall out of? That's the only, only question I have. Where would, where would we pull that money to pay for the, for the grant writer?
And it would just be out of our two-one-five account, one of those line items there. Um, and I can bring that back before the board later on, before we, she won't charge us for.
Yeah.
We just got a deadline, the, the grant has to be submitted by the fourth.
Okay.
Um, if it is not submitted, and I had to get things changed over today to be the administrator on that US.gov dot grants.
Yeah.
So we're kind of pushing it to get where we can approve it.
And what you're seeking is the opportunity to go and.
Correct, but, and then, once we get awarded it, then it would come back before you guys say, we've been awarded this grant, accept it or not accept it.
As, as long as that's legal, okay, good deal, I got the nods, so we're, we're good to go.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Malur?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Okay, item passes. Item three, discussion and possible action to use Cody Marquis to equip some, if not all, of the six twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorer PIs when council init- When council initially approved the purchase of the vehicles, Visual Force was named as the equipment installer. Marquis' estimate is not to exceed two thousand, four hundred per unit. It is in the best interest of the city to get these units equipped and in use in a timely fashion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion from Gauthier and a second from Nance. Discussion?
The only thing I have is, is the same thing. We don't have a line item where we're going to pull that money out of. I mean, I'm totally agree with them with doing it, but just to keep our record straight, we kind of need to know where that money's going to, where's it going to fall out of, what, what line?
Can we ask?
Adam, so this money's already been, it's a, it's a loan through the Bank of Commerce.
Okay.
To that money and how it'll be paid.
Okay, all right.
So council, this will be part of this and number four.
Correct.
Correct. Will be part of the last lease purchase that the.
Okay.
City entered into with the bank to purchase those vehicles. It included the equipment and because everything has been on back order, those have been sitting there waiting and that money is still available to draw.
Okay, so that's on the lease purchase deal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough. That's what I needed to know.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Further discussion?
Is there any way we could find another account to take this out of without going into another lease purchase agreement?
We're not going into a new.
We're not going into a new.
This, this one is already in place.
Well, we haven't used it, though. We could give it back.
So we used it when we purchased the vehicles, so there's.
How about this latest one? Is it forty thousand, a different account or is that the same account?
It's part of one of our existing accounts.
Okay, all right, all right.
So when we took out that lease, we had, we had allocated through, for Visual Force to do that, but now we've got Marquis who can do it for twenty-four hundred, not exceed. That money is still sitting dormant, waiting to be used.
And we're also going to use Visual Four, so we've got two of Visual Fours, we've got, you know, we're going to take some to, we're going to get them rigged out as the, as the goal, to get these units online, because.
The longer they sit there, we're just.
Well, we're running two people to a unit right now and it's running sixteen hours a day, which is going to kill our fleet because we've got twelve newer ones and below that, everything's a hundred thousand miles or more. Um, so over half our fleet is over a hundred thousand miles, which is going to run us into some problems, so.
Further discussion? Questions? Call for the vote?
Nance?
Yes.
Maluer?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Okay. Item four, discussion and possible action regarding a change of some of the equipment for the six twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorer PIs, which wouldn't approve to purchase by council had an equipment list approved as well. The new equipment list is in the best interest of the city and will now, I'm sorry, and will allow the lights and sirens to be mounted behind the front grille rather than on the pushbar to get the units into use. The pushbars for the front of the units have been on back order and a timeframe could not be given for their estimated arrival. Some of the rear lights will also be changed in order to make our units more visible from the rear. The new equipment list is a hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents cheaper than the original quote for equipment. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Choya, second from Gauthier. Discussion?
And basically on this, the pushbars on the front of the cars, I mean, you can grab those things and shake them so they're not much use and, um, after talking to Cody over, you know, discussing it, and he installs GRDA's equipment and Base County's equipment, so he does some of these. Um, we talked about just going behind the grille with them and so a lot of the equipment's the same, but the front end, we got stuff that goes behind the grills now. And in the back, it goes on the outside of the car, stood behind that windshield, so you can see it a lot better, so.
Warren Chu discussing the other day with me that that, when you got in, that was kind of like.
Well, in the front, so these will still have that front visor light. We're going to eventually switch to top mount light bars because they're easier to see, but this stuff's already, a lot of that was already there. Um, so we're going to need to just get them online, but yeah, it, eventually we're going to start going to top mount light bars on these cars. It's just easier to see out of because it takes out of your face.
Are, are the pushbars on the front, you said they're on back order, so are we, are we going to have to pay for them anyway?
We're not doing them, no. Um, we're not going to pay for them, we just canceled them.
Okay.
So we're good.
Further discussion, question? You guys are being easy tonight. All right, call for the vote?
Maluer?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Item number five, discussing, uh, discussion and possible action regarding accepting a donation of two chairs for the mayor's office from Fred Taylor Furniture at a value of five hundred and ninety-nine dollars each. These chairs replace the old wooden chairs.
Motion.
A motion from Gauthier. Second from Nance. Uh, if anybody's ever sat in the mayor's office for anything longer than, I don't know, thirty seconds, you realize, has everything, it made those old school chairs come up with you when you went and they were wobbly and they were just uncomfortable. So, um, uh, Mr., Mr. Taylor has donated two chairs. They're very comfortable. Many of you guys have already come and reclined in them, uh, but we would just like to acknowledge that donation.
Very nice.
Did we get a motion on that? Any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Maluer?
Yes.
And thank you very much.
Yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely, we love donations, don't we? Uh, item seven, committee reports, budget and personnel?
Uh, tonight, next Tuesday.
Okay. B, ordinance and insurance?
Nothing at this time.
And item C, street?
Yes, it will be the regularly scheduled meeting at the end of the month. And I believe Mr. Powell is going to have it for, for us to present to council after that meeting about going out for bids on phase two of the Salt Branch Creek Project, which extends on out west of, uh, Highway sixty-nine to Maple Street. And I know it's not on the agenda, but I have an update on our ad hoc committee for the audit.
Okay. Do that, let's do that on unforeseeable.
Okay.
Okay, unforeseeable business.
Yes, I have two things. I have two things to bring up on that. One is, uh, you know, sixty, almost sixty days ago, we sent out the proposals to several different firms for the audit for the billing project. To date, only one has been submitted. Uh, and we, at the second meeting in, next council meeting, should be the end of our sixty days. So it will need to be addressed at that meeting about the RFP proposals. Uh, Courtney has told me that there is one other, only one other potential interest right now that is, and that has been talking to her, so maybe we'll have two. Hopefully we'll have more, but we've got one for sure, possibly two.
I would like to clarify that that ends at five PM on the next council date, the sixteenth, so I will likely not have those available to print and have for you guys before the council meeting. It'll be kind of cutting it close to get to council for that.
Everybody understand that? Everybody okay with that? Thank you.
And then the other thing I'd like to bring up under unforeseen business is that, uh, a couple of, uh, budget meetings ago, it was brought up that, from our auditor, or from our accountant, that we were probably about six hundred thousand dollars in the hole. And, uh, I don't know what has been done to try to, to get a handle on that since that meeting. We've had two major expenses come up tonight that, um, we're having to postpone because we don't have the money in the accounts. So I would like the mayor's office and the budget committee to seriously consider getting with Mr. Colker ASAP to get us a report back at the next council meeting on where we stand on our budget. Because I think that seriously needs to be addressed. Uh, on our current money and of course going into the budget year for the next year and, and the budget committee. Uh, but I would like to see that addressed at the next meeting with the report from the accountant.
Mr. Shropshire?
Yes.
Who is currently on that since we've had some personnel changes?
Actually, at this time, it's, it's myself and the, uh, uh, alternate would, would be Randy Chitwood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Those are noted. All right, um, item number nine, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion, Nance?
I'll second if nobody else will.
Mr. Gauthier, you can have the second, we'll give it to you. Okay, we are adjourned. I'd like to, uh.
We have to call for the vote.
Oh, well, I know, I'm just testing. Call for the vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Maluer?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
And then we'll fill the box.
Adjourned. All right, we will enter into Pryor Public Works Authority, we'll call that to order. Item number two, approve the minutes of April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.[1740.64]